Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. January 4th, 2001. Order Clay Township Board of Trustees Meeting. Call the order, roll call please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Krista Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here, here.
Okay, we're all here and accounted for. Before we proceed on, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Under New Business Two, like to, the Board of Review reappointments. And under New Business Three, hire a part-time dispatcher. Do I have support?
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. So moving right along to bills payable. I'll entertain a motion. Our total bills payable is $130,734.88.
Motion to approve bills payable in the amount $130,734.88.
Okay, we have motion and support. We did have our water bill this month, and we had two sewer bills actually on this round. So that's like, or two-thirds of it right there, so. Any discussion? We have motion and support. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yep.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we normally have our supervisors report, but we were only open for like, two and a half days since our last meeting. I do have a few things I'll bring up at board member comments. So moving right along, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Chris?
Yes. Good evening. Christine Hope on Gore Drive, Hurstens Island, also Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. My comment is in regards to the Township Board's decision at its December 21st meeting to postpone the reappointment of a planning commission to planning commissioners. At that time, it was stated that the supervisor is going to make contact with Mishway Cart and Mr. Bain, and as of 4:30 today, neither of them have been contacted. We have a planning commission meeting coming up on the 27th of January, so we're kind of at a loss as to where we stand. We had election of officers before all this happened. At the last meeting, Mr. Bryson and Ms. Valentine both spoke vehemently about how they require complete transparency in the township. With that being said, I'm going to ask the trustees elected by the citizens of this township to represent the best interests of this township to require the same total transparency on this issue. I have some questions that I'd like you to think about. Number one, why weren't Sandy and Mr. Greitach solicited well in advance of the expiration of Mishway Cart's and Mr. Bain's commissions and told there were empty planning commission seats that needed to be filled? Mr. Greitach withdrew himself from the recommendation during the meeting stating that he was misinformed as to the openings. And I'm just curious as to what they were told. Secondly, why did Mishway Cart and Mr. Bain not receive the normal email from the township advising them their commissions were due to expire and asking whether they wanted to be reappointed? Three, why did it take an inquiry by Miss Shwayker to get the email sent to them? Four, why was there no response to their emails asking for reappointment? And instead, recommendations made for two other people to be appointed. That's how these two people found out. Fifth, the planning commission has always been an equal mix of commissioners from the mainland and from the islands. Right now, there's five mainlanders and four islanders. If these people would have been reappointed, would have been appointed at the last meeting, the two new people, it would have taken that mix to three to six, three from the island, six from the mainland. begs the question as to how is that a fair representation of this township? And six, why was there not one explanation to any of the trustees of the actions taken other than stating that the township supervisor makes appointments to the planning commission, and he would contact these two individuals, and has yet failed to do so? I have to say what bothers me the most is the fact that I'm concerned had I not brought this up at the last meeting, that these people would have been reappointed, then the township, the planning commissioners of this township would have found out at their January meeting that their newly re-elected chairperson and another commissioner had been replaced. So I hope that you would consider these questions and keep them in your mind. And I ask again that the Township Board amend their agenda to include the reappointment of Planning Commission Chairperson Kathy Shwayker and Commissioner Harold Bain, and respectfully request their reappointments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I will comment. Excuse me. We postponed it until I could get a chance to talk to both Harold Bain and Kathy Shwayker with the holidays. I have not been able to do that. I plan on reaching out to them, you know, this week, or if need be later next week, to do that. And the process of, by state statute, is set up by the state that planning commission members are appointed to the board by the supervisor and approved by the Township Board of Trustees. That's the process. So. So that's the process set forth by the state of Michigan. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Kathy?
Sorry, head on mute myself, I'm sorry. Kathy Shwayker, Hurstens Island, I'm not going to reiterate pretty much what Christine said, but I do agree that the supervisor, whoever the supervisor is of your township, makes recommendations. It's the board who gets to approve it. The board never has to approve anybody you recommend, and they can make suggestions, maybe look at somebody else. It doesn't have to be Harold or me, or actually Mr. Greitach, who called me after the meeting to ask what was going on after your 21st meeting, and asked me if Mr. Bryson had contacted me, and he had not. So at this particular meeting, I see that Mr. Bryson is now again saying that he's going to reach out to us. So I just want the board to understand that there appears to be a lack of communication going on. I'm an easy person to talk to and easy person to find. Text me, email me, make a phone call. But at this particular point, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page, and I do hope the board asks questions and what's going on. So other than that, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Seeing none. And once, twice. It's hard at these Zoom meetings. Okay, moving right along. We have new business. And under one new business as our presentation, I still want to call you guys by your own name, old name. That is Paul Bailey and Tammy from UHY. They're going to go over our annual audit report. Are you guys on?
You hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, pleasure to thank you to have me on tonight. I think everybody got a copy of their audit report, hopefully in their packet. I also, just before, just a little bit ago, a couple hours ago, sent over a kind of a presentation. Artie, did they get a copy of the presentation?
Yeah, I sent it to them a couple hours ago via email.
Okay. And that's basically what I did is, is the presentation is a summary of about a 64-page document. We're going to try to go through this versus going through a 60-page, 64. I've tried to narrow it down to about five pages. Again, as you know, you contract with our firm each year to do an annual financial audit. Everything went very well during the audit, as good as could be expected with everything going on in the pandemic and everything. Usually, we come down and spend a couple weeks with your staff. Tammy, who's also on the line, she's a senior in charge of your job, and I'm Paul Bailey, I'm the partner in charge. And we usually come down and spend a couple weeks. Unfortunately, this year, like everything else, it's kind of got mixed up a little bit. We did most of it remotely out of our office for the safety of your staff and our staff too. So it wasn't unusual audit, and most audits are being conducted pretty well remotely now, but everything went pretty well. You know, with going back and forth, I appreciate everything that your staff did to accommodate us, and hopefully we can get back to normal by this summer. If you, the first page of the, just past the title page of the audit presentation, one of the first things in your audit report is what they call the independent auditor's report. It's on page one and two in that blue book. And you have what they call an unmodified or clean opinion. That's what you're striving for. By, in December, we had to send a copy of this to the Michigan Department of Treasury. And that's what they look for, what kind of opinion you need to get. And again, you have an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best type of an opinion that a governmental unit or a commercial entity can receive. The next two items, we're not going to spend much time with tonight, but I just want to touch base just so you know what they are. There's a letter in there on pages three through seven, what they call the management discussions and analysis letter. It's a summary report to kind of give an overview of the township, how the financial statements are put together, as well as some very summarized financial information. You must have that letter in there to get that unmodified opinion or the clean opinion, so just point that out. Roman numeral three on that presentation, there's really two sets of financial statements in your audit report. There's a commercial way of looking at Clay Township, and then there's the traditional way governments have reported. The first few pages, eight, nine, and 10 in the audit report is a commercial way of looking at the Clay Township. And what that does is it adds the value of the buildings in there, it adds the value of, or takes, subtracts the value, records the value of your pension obligations and your OPEB obligations and things like that. And it's a commercial way of looking at the township. We're going to spend tonight the traditional way governments report, and really the way that Michigan Department of Treasury takes a look at you when they get the report, and that's the bottom of page one of that presentation. As of June 30th, you had assets of $2,431,170, liabilities of $156,138, some what they call deferred inflow of resources of $99,000. Sorry about that. That's what happens when you're home. And that's basically grant money that didn't come in right after the end of the year, which left a fund balance of, as of the end of the year, $2,176,027. You'll see in parentheses of each of those, we've put like page 11 in the book that you got. So if you want more information, you can turn to that.
That's for the general fund, right, Paul?
That's the general fund. We're talking the general fund. Yes, I forgot to mention that.
Right.
The general fund statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance at the bottom of page one, you'll see this year you took in $1,685,924. You spent $2,296.68. You had other, what they call financing sources, uses of $55,100. So for the year ended June 30th, 2020, you actually spent $659,844 more than you took in. That includes a couple, three big items. You purchased land, you're by yourself of $420,000, as well as you contributed $200,000 for the county park. So if you add those two items back, your year would have been a negative about $39,000. And that includes all your mitigation, flooding mitigation expenditures there. So really, without the land, like I say, we had expenses over revenues of about $39,000. But again, that includes a couple $300,000 of water, your flooding mitigation there. Page two? It's on me anywhere, if anybody has any questions too. Page two?
You say it page two. Out of what book?
It's the presentation that you got in the email, sorry, sir.
Well, I didn't get a presentation.
Okay, okay, then I'll do it differently then, sir.
I sent you an email, Mark, about two hours ago. It should be in there.
I can do it differently.
Okay.
Okay. If we got, we'll take the book then, and if we turn to page kind of 13.
Okay.
We just kind of went through the general fund. There you see that, you know, $659,000, three lines from the bottom, the first column, the $659,844 negative.
Yep.
You then have the fire fund next to it, and at the top, you'll see the revenues that they took in for taxes. Total revenues of $1,19,214. You had expenditures of $852,000. So for the year ended, the fire fund was to the good $166,624. The column next to it is a police one, and you can see the revenues that they took in, total revenues for the year of $2,761,506. They spent $2,878,498. So for the year, they spent $116,992 more than they took in. The next column is a whole bunch of other funds, and I'm going to, we'll turn back to that page. If we turn back to page 55 and 56. These are called non-major funds, or just not, they don't have the volume to be considered a major fund. But you basically have what, 10 extra, 10 funds here. On page 55, you can see the rubbish collection fund. Their revenues this year were $854,099. You spent $892,970, so expenses over revenues of $38,871. You can see your fund balance at the beginning of the year were $268,000, so your fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2020 was $229,425. Go rate next to it, your drug law enforcement, you took in $1,358. You spent $9,618. So you spent $8,260 more than you took in, and the fund balance at June 30th, 2020 was $1,699. Drug forfeitures had revenues of $6. Drug forfeitures of expenditure of $3,046. That was the beginning fund balance, so that fund kind of used up all but its fund balance there and kind of closed out. The Oakland Cemetery had revenues of $26,163. Expenditures of $38,278. Transfers from other funds of $11,206. So with the transfers in, it was still short about $909, but it had fund balance at the beginning of the year of $12,768. So fund balance at the end of the year of $11,859. Music in the Park, they had revenues of $12,700. You spent $7,278, so $5,422 to the good. Added to the beginning fund balance of $5,934 left your fund balance in that fund of $11,356. The Road Canal and Maintenance one, there on page 56, had revenues of $16,542. You had expenditures of $30,875, so you used up $14,000 in your fund balance. The fund balance at the beginning of the year were $78,000, so you still had $64,165 of fund balance. Parks and Rec, the next fund, the next column, up towards the top, you'll see they had revenues of $67,298. They spent $72,391, so they used up $5,093 of their fund balance. Their beginning fund balance was $19,000, so they have fund balance at June 30th, 2020 of $14,476. The Pregnites Fund, you can see revenues of $2,694, expenses of $1,0381. So they were to the good, $1,0313. Fund balance at the beginning of the year was $9,562. So the fund balance at June 30th, 2020 was $10,875. You have your Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, the next fund, revenues there was $2,622. You transferred out to the Cemetery Fund, $2,206, so that left them to the good $416. The Colonial Road Assessment Fund, revenues came in at $4,405. The debt payment was $50,500. You always have to transfer in some money. This year, you transferred in $56,100, so that left you $5 to the good and $18 of fund balance at the end of the year. That's your, what they call your governmental funds. If we turn back to page 15 and 16. You also have what they call, what they call enterprise funds, or funds that operate similar to a business. In your case, it's your water fund and your sewer fund. On page 15 shows the assets of the water fund and the liabilities. There, it starts out with cash and utilities receivable, goes down, you can see there. At the very bottom of the page, it shows your equity of $13 million, but that includes the value of your system there. So I always tell you, if you kind of take you, what they go up towards the top, your current assets of $3,997,495. Do you see that number? And go kind of about halfway down the page, and you see your current liability of $621,000 there. How much would you have left over? And you'd have $3,375,000 left over if you needed to do a project. So your water fund would have about a, kind of a working capital of about $3.3 million, $3.4 million. If you do the same thing with your sewer fund, they would have a working capital of about $830,888 there. On page 16, just shows the operating revenues and operating expenses there. And you can see at the three lines from the bottom, the water fund had what they call its change in net position of $752,000, and the sewer fund was a negative $374. There's a breakdown on the handout if you later look at it. When you really look at it from a cash position, the water fund basically was to the good about $402,000, and the sewer fund on a cash position lost about 67, because this page includes depreciation of the system, wear and tear expense of the system. So when you add that back, plus you work with some other numbers for the OPEB and pension liability, again, your bottom lines were $402,000 and negative 67. So overall, operating kind of similar to what, you know, how you want. These two funds are kind of, are designed to be self-supporting, that their revenues are equal to, over the long term, equal to or greater than the expenses. Again, overall, I think you're in excellent financial condition. I know you had a lot of unusual expenses this year. That's the number section. Real quickly. Is there anything else? I want to cover the letters. If any questions on the number section or anything else I could cover in more detail, I'd be more than happy to spend a lot of time if you'd like.
Hey, Paul, at some point in time, can you go over our long-term debt with the board?
How much debt you have?
Yeah, well, we have remaining, and just so they have an understanding of it.
Yes, sir. If we turn to page 32. This is one of the more, you know, notes that you turn to, I turn to quite a bit on a lot of governmental units. It lists what they call your long-term debt note. And from governmental activities, that's your, everything but really your water and sewer fund. The very top of that note are called governmental activities. You really only owed $63,499, and that had to do with that TASER contract where you purchased those TASERS and owed $28,854. And then compensated absences is if employees retire or leave. For you owe vacation and sick time of $34,645. So your governmental activities are pretty debt-free or very, very low. The bottom part of that page lists the water fund and the sewer fund debt. You'll see this year you paid off the $1998 Elgin Act Water Plant loan, so that was totally paid off this year. You have the 2014 refunding bond there. And that still at June 30th, 2020, you had a balance there of $1,425,000. The 2018 special assessment bond, the amount that was owed out of the water fund, $425,000 for total amount due out of the water fund of $1,850,000. The sewer fund really just had the 2014 general obligation bonds of $79,170. So really, they don't have a lot of debt either, all things considered. There's no going to a lot of detail on your pension and your OPEB liability on the next few pages too. If you, just if you're interested in, it shows your funding percentages and things like that. Connected to the audit, there should be a couple letters in your packet, I hope. One says independent auditor's report on internal control. As I've explained in the past, when we come in and do your audit, not only do we test the numbers, you know, make sure with what the bank state, you know, what your records show is actually in the bank, and we test a lot of the other numbers. We spend a lot of time with what we call your, the internal controls, making sure that two sets of eyes see all types of transaction. The board is an integral part of that. You've proven the bills tonight as a portion of the things. When we pick a sample of invoices, you know, we take a look at, okay, how does the, who orders the, who orders the parts or whatever that's being ordered? How does the invoice come in? Who's approves the invoices? All the way to all, to go into the board minutes to make sure that they were approved by the board. So all those things that we look at when we do your audit, and if we find that, you know, there's some area where we're required to point it out in this letter, if it's significant, and really, you only have one item in this letter, and it's a technicality. Back when Enron and everything was going on, they said, they come up with the idea that all entities, regardless of size, should have somebody on staff that can pull this audit report together. That takes a lot of training. That's what I do for a living. You guys manage a township and run a township. You know, we pull your financial statements. Almost, most of our clients, our size that we deal with, the governmental units, rely on the auditors to do it, and that's what that's just saying. You rely on us. The cost benefit isn't there for you to hire somebody internally, send them to all the training and so forth to produce one report. The second letter is the audit communication letter. There, hopefully you have. The other communication letter is to give the board a summary of how the audit went. Auditors aren't required to do a meeting like this. We appreciate the opportunity to come and, you know, answer any questions you may have. But this kind of just lays out the, kind of the audit process. The first page is seeing audit findings, that's just a key or generic heading. Doesn't mean there's anything significant that we found. Just talks about there's estimates in your financial statements, like depreciation, how long assets will last. You depreciate them over their lives. And then pretty much the big, other big estimates in your financial statements is the pension liability. You know, that's based on how long people will live, you know, and so forth, based on the actual analysis that is there. Plus your OPEB, other post-employment benefits, which is based on not only, you know, how long people will live, but how, how, how much health insurance costs go to and so forth. And so there are pretty big estimates in your financial statements. Just goes on, talk about whether there's any difficulties in performance during the audit. We don't talk about, you know, we really didn't have any difficulties that I started out, you know, we, you know, all audits right now is a little difficult because we are doing them remotely. It's not the ideal situation, but it's workable. And as long as both parties work back and forth there. Correct and incorrect statements, we help you kind of close your books out at the end of the year. So we propose some entries to help you close out and so forth. Really, if you turn to the last page, when we, when we had done the audit, we finished the audit, then we take a few weeks to pull it all together, and then we have a meeting with a supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, and we basically go through it page by page and talk about each of the, almost all the numbers, and making sure we didn't misinterpret stuff, as well as we'll have some comments about maybe some little things that we'd like you to maybe think about. And that's what the last page attached there is. There's just three or four things on this page there. One is, the first one just talks about, you know, making sure we document the administration. There one is the first one just talks about, you know, making sure we document the administration charge to the other funds. You charge the water and sewer fund and the rubbish fund a charge because your general fund does a lot of services and that's very acceptable. We just want to make sure you update that the calculation on a periodic basis. Permit revenues, there's a separate log over in the building department. And we just want you to reconcile that, you know, periodically after the end of the year. I think Tammy, you can speak to this. That was that was starting to happen in the process. A couple of journal entries, just maybe doing a little more timely. And then just a method of when you adopt your budget. You're adopting your minutes reflect the expenses. But I think just technically they're supposed to also reflect where where the revenues are coming from. You always have the attachment to show where they come from. But we're just asking that when you approve your next year's budget, next time, just document in the minutes the revenues also. Really some technicalities just to tighten things up. That's a real quick synopsis of your audit report, but a 64, 65-page letter, audit plus the letters. Anything I can answer or Tammy can answer at this time?
I would just mention to the board, you know, going forward, and we already have been. But we're keeping a close eye on the police budget. And it's actually just looked at today with Chief Coach and it's looking pretty good going going forward. Problem with that budget, 80% of the costs is associated with labor. And eventually we're going to have to look at at garbage. We haven't touched garbage rates, I think, in about four, maybe five years. I'm in the middle of actually renegotiating a contract and going out for bid on that. And recycling, it looks like it's going to take a jump. So we may have to do some adjustments there. But we do have a good fund balance in that fund. Also going forward, you know, we, everybody, the board knows we have a sewer intercept problem. And that's why I kind of wanted to review our long-term debt. That's probably going to end up, we'll know more here in the next, you know, three to six months. Probably going to end up being one and a half to 1.13 quarter million dollar fix for us. And, you know, I will probably be proposing to do a bond to pay for that. And we may have to add a sewer debt charge that we used to have one at one time. I'm not sure when it was taken off, but we may have to do a sewer debt charge to pay for those. And earlier he was going over some of those small funds. I know a couple of them, like the Colony Road, that one's going to disappear now. Because it's been taken care of. And the drug forfeiture and the other ones, we're trying to spend those down. So they actually kind of disappear. And the only comment I know at the end, Paul mentioned we ran a $24,000 deficit in permitting with our inspection costs. And that's something that we'll have to talk about as a board. That used to be about $40,000. And now it's down to 24,000. But, you know, it's a fine line, you know. Do we want to absorb some of those costs or raise permit fees? And then, you know, if they get too expensive, you know, people don't avoid getting permits too sometimes, believe it or not. And so that's one thing that we should probably talk about sometime this year as a board.
Yeah, I have a question already. Under permit fees, I, you know, I understand it's supposed to be money in or money out or money out, money in. How do we get into a deficit aspect on it? I mean,
It's estimating. We don't know how many permits we're going are going to come in. We don't know the amount, just like our our Oaklawn Cemetery. We don't know how many people are going to be buried there. It's a guess. You know, it's it's hard to 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 do that. Or but or forecast that. And like I say, that's one thing that we should probably look at. It used to be $40,000 about three years ago. Now it's down to 24,000. So.
Okay, yeah, well, any of these deficits that we have, we should be working diligently in all of them.
Right. So that's why I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Okay, so anybody have any questions for Paul?
Artie, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, Joanne.
There on general entries to record payroll, MERS and credit card expenses should be posted in a more timely manner. Now, would we look at that as a weakness?
We have been, or I think we corrected that situation. And and as of, you know, it's been, it's been good as of late. So. Yeah, it's it's we're up to date. So.
Okay.
I do the two major elections we had and the coronavirus pandemic when we were shut down for a couple of months, we had, you know, we were short on staff. But, you know, we got past that.
Yeah, it was it was a definite challenge.
I was just about to say that there's was a lot, you know, we had, as Cindy said, shut down and Corona and this and that. But I think we're back on track. That's good. Probably written a little bit before we got into all this mess. So.
Any questions for Paul or anything else right now?
I had a question for Paul. My question is in relation to the fund balance and and what constitutes a fund, a healthy fund balance? And is there any correlation between the fund balance and direct operating costs?
The most common question I get is how much fund balance should any should we have in our general fund or any fund? And I always kind of relate it, a couple, three things is relate it back to your own savings account. And we probably could pull all seven board members and say, okay, what are you comfortable with? If in your in your savings and some people would be very comfortable with, you know, a couple hundred dollars or $500. Other people would want, you know, 30, $40,000. And it kind of is a, you know, it's how you kind of look at life a little bit and the process is, you know, do you want to make sure you have money set aside for rainy days? Now, for instance, you were able to buy $600,000 of property this year because you had a very healthy fund balance there as a percentage of your expenditures and did not put you in any dire need. It's already pointed out, you don't have a lot of debt there. If you wouldn't have a healthy fund balance, when you went to buy something like that, you would have to. There's a lot of rules of thumbs out there. So a lot of times a rule of thumb is, you know, 20, you know, 15 to 20% of the expenditure. I don't really think that's a high enough level. But if you call some of the governmental associations, the GFPA Governmental Finance Officers Association, they will use that revenue, that rule of thumb. I take a look at it as probably a lot more like a savings account. You know, when when something like this occurs or you have your flooding mitigation, 20%, you probably wouldn't have been able to do everything that you wanted to do. If that's all you would have had had there. So I think what you really should do with a fund balance is just take a long-term look at it and say, okay, what what kind of expenses do we have? You know, two years out, three, five years out, 10 years out and and really start building there. So but to answer your question, a lot of places will use a rule of thumb of, you know, somewhere between 15 and 25% of your annual expenditure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, our general fund, we we have enough to go a year probably or a little over a year, which is really good. That's why we weren't too afraid of doing what we did.
And it allows you when there's a pandemic or something like this to kind of absorb some of the downs. I mean, fortunately, you know, when they first started back in April and May, the state shared revenues was supposed to be really significantly down. You know, fortunately, the sales tax pot came back up. And but in the future, they're looking at it. So by having a healthy fund balance like you do, it allows you some flexibility not to have to react, you know, immediately if if some if there was a bad, you know, something occurs. So.
Paul, what have you, not to change the subject, what have you heard on your on the revenue sharing? Because I budgeted by 25% yet, but I guess it's not going to be that bad.
I've I've heard it's not, you know, from basically from, you know, their new budget year is supposed to be almost equal to is my my understanding. I don't stay up on it 100%. But you know, what you got prior year. So I don't think you're supposed to take that type of hit unless things get really bad again, you know, when that they can always, as you know, they have those revenue conferences each quarter to to adjust that. But it really came back. I mean, in April, everybody was pretty paranoid and scared because they were talking 30, 40% cut in revenue sharing at one time. And it came back. So keep our fingers crossed that things will start getting better. Or keep getting better, I guess.
Okay, any other questions for Paul? I can't remember, Paul. Do we have to make a motion to file this?
You can just say, make a motion, make a motion to accept it or file it, file it. And that's basically all you have to do.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept and file the audit or audit as presented tonight. We motion and support any more discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Cindy. Cindy, are you with us?
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello.
Yes.
Hey, I have a question. This is Sue Zobel. Can I jump in real quick?
Actually, not right now. We're in the middle of a vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi Cindy, we can hear you.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I'll go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Yeah.
Chrissy Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Reagan.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Who else? We have Joanne.
Yes.
Mark Richard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. And Artie Bryson, yes. A motion passes. And thank you, Paul.
It's a pleasure to work with you.
Yes. And I'm sure we'll be talking to you and Tammy again soon.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Yep, you too. Thank you much. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda, we have reappoint the board review. Sent out an email earlier today. Bev Rose, Tom Sawyer, Debbie Addy, the regular members that are up and Dave Burley and Jill Bozy are the alternates. I'll entertain a motion. These are presented by Jerry Lawton, our assessor.
I'll make it. I'll make that motion to accept those people. Yeah, the BOA.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yes, if you can hear me.
Hey, I did the vote, the roll call vote for you last. I marked you down as a yes too. Is there any more discussion on the board of reviews reappointment? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Last thing on the agenda, we have a request to hire a part-time dispatcher by Chief Coach Kayla Elcorn. Mike, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. As I put in the packet there, you see she does come with some good credentials. She is looking to get into the law enforcement. She feels this will be a pretty good fit for her. The background that we've done on her produced nothing but good things to be said about her. She does live in the township, actually just from what I understand, bought a new home in the township here, close to our department. So another plus right there. But she's still a young student, still going, shows a lot of potential. Other other things she's done shows a pretty good work ethic along with being able to multitask, which we know definitely comes with the dispatch position. So. Something we're trying, we got one current part-time dispatcher. We try to keep two on staff. It's kind of tough because obviously the the hours are there for them to cover scheduling anomalies as far as vacations, sick time, things like that. That and coming into our busier months. The the one part-timer that we have right now stays pretty busy between being a firefighter as well as working for Tri-Hospital EMS. So he doesn't have a lot of time to put in. So that's kind of why we're looking this way and I think should be a pretty good.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Kayla Elcorn as part-time dispatcher for Clay Township PD.
Port.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Did Chrissy, do you support that?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carried. Okay.
Artie, I do know she was on the Zoom meeting here earlier. I don't know.
Yeah, she disappeared.
Yeah, I did see her. I don't, I'm not sure where she's at, but that's we'll we'll beat her up another time.
Oh, it's good. Hopefully in person.
Yeah, sounds good. Hoping our next meeting's in person. Oh, love, love to meet in person. Okay, other than that, we have a board member comments. Cindy Valentine.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I had to disconnect and come back in. I don't really have a whole lot. I want to thank Tammy and Paul for doing our audit presentation. Hoping yes, to meet in person next time.
Okay, thank you. Chrissy, you have anything?
Nope, just want to say Happy New Year.
Okay, Chris?
I just wanted to make comment and thank Chris for coming on, voicing her opinion, her ideas, her questions. The board certainly will consider everything that you've said tonight. And, you know, I appreciate the way you went about expressing your ideals. So thank you, Chris.
Maureen?
Happy New Year and I'm glad that the audit looked good. I mean, after all we've been through this year, it's quite an accomplishment. So I'm impressed and healthy and prosperous New Year to everybody.
Okay, Joanne?
I'll say Happy New Year too, and I hope that we all can start getting that shot that's going to just make this Corona go away.
Okay, Mark?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a somewhat of a statement that according to the MTA, the Township Board may remove a member of the Planning Commission for misfeasance, malfeasance, nonfeasance upon written charges. I understand this situation here is because of the lack of a email supposedly. There's also issues of conflict of interest. I've sat on the board since 2012 as far as the Planning Commission is concerned. I've been the board representative on the Planning Commission. I've been the board representative on the planning commission since sixteen, two thousand and sixteen. And again, here for another term, I have not ever witnessed any of those things I just mentioned by anybody. Has it ever been brought to my attention? Have I ever, ever seen it as I sit on the board? So if there's any allegations that come forward, would like to see those. And Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to mention real quick this week, I have, Wednesday, we have mediation with Piper's Act lawsuit. And I'm feeling pretty, pretty confident about that. And as I mentioned, we're, we're getting garbage quotes right now. And our next meeting, we'll have a report on our Saw Grant and probably some consideration on software that Grant will pay for. That will, the township will be able to utilize going forward. And let's see, I wanted, congratulations to Kayla. And yes, thank you Tracy and, or Tammy and Paul. And I think they're off now, but they do a fine job for us as always. And Happy New Year, everybody. And I hope you had a Merry Christmas. So.
Artie, can I ask a quick question?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you here in a second. We're, we're winding up. You, you missed public comments.
I know, I'm sorry. I was wait, I was waiting to get in. Nobody was letting me in.
So if you hang on one second, okay, let, let me get through the meeting here. Next meeting is January eighteenth, hopefully in person. So we got one more motion.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Support, all in favor? Ayes.